Her birthday. Well, happy birthday to her.
Good afternoon, Chief.
How's it going, Chief? Hi, everyone. How's it going?
Welcome back.
Thanks. It's quite the... Time to get home from Memphis yesterday and that was a chore.
You were in Tennessee?
Yeah, I went down my aunt's fiftieth wedding anniversary.
Oh.
So they had a party for on Saturday and they had that cloud strike incident happen.
Oh, no.
Oh, right.
So, yeah, it affected computer systems around the world.
Yeah.
Took me, which is normally a two hour and twenty minute flight from Memphis, took me almost twenty hours to get home, twenty-four hours. Yeah, that's fun.
Did you end up driving?
From New York City last night at about twenty-one, I drove home, yeah.
Wow.
After being in the airport all day.
Yeah.
And kept changing flights, changing flights and we were supposed to go, you know, to Atlanta and then Boston, we had, you know, we had connecting flight unfortunately and this wasn't happening.
Wow.
And we flew down there, which was the... They seemed to be the most impacted by it, of course. But, yeah, it was a tough... Close to twenty-four hours of travel for...
Yeah, for a weekend.
Yes.
You choose one of the airlines, they said not to choose.
Yeah.
Still got it.
My friend only can fly with me, have such bad luck on flights, they're like, "We'll take a different flight." We'll meet you there.
So just continues to prove out.
Yeah, yeah.
That's awesome.
Is it though?
Well, I'll be back.
Yeah, thanks.
I need to back to the state. Technology is great until it doesn't work.
Yeah, when it's fine, it's the best it is. When it's bad, it's the worst it is.
This will make things so much more efficient, except for...
When it goes down.
Yeah.
It wasn't even a virus, it was a patch, an update, they sent out.
It was incompatible with...
Microsoft.
The real kicker about it is you had to have somebody go there to remove a file.
Yeah.
Because we had that happening up at the hospital.
Yeah.
And, you know, a lot, they've got a couple thousand people that actually work from home and home for them are as far away as Florida and they have to send out certain, you know, people from wherever.
Oh, to physically catch persons.
Wow. Yeah, so they push it out and, yeah, so I, I don't know what the implications are to that corporation, but it affected companies worldwide.
This is, this is that ultra-secure cloud.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was bad. Yeah, there was a lot of people...
I guess that'll be increased revenue.
Yeah, I don't know how, I don't know how to offend that one.
You couldn't remote in because the computer was dead. Otherwise, they would have been able to remote in and...
Oh, yeah.
Oh, right.
And pull that file out.
Yeah.
Yeah, they had to go on and catch it before the boot process, so the ones like the DOS, if you will, they all, you know, I don't know what they call it now.
The binary code.
Yeah. And it took down the New Hampshire nine-one-one system completely for two hours.
Yep.
And, I mean, there's been worse cases of that that's happened, just recently in Mass, they were down for
Oh, yeah.
A day and a half.
D- ninety-one, D-nine-one-one, yeah, I was getting the texts.
Well, it seems to kind of like feel like a bunch of soft little...
Probes.
Let's feel this, let's feel that.
You wonder, yeah. Shows you how really vulnerable you are when it really comes down to it. Most of it's because a little bit of luck and people just don't want to get you because it's pretty vulnerable.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, we'll sing that at five o'clock. Please rise for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need to fix that broken picture, it's driving me nuts.
Broken picture? Oh. Everybody touches it, that's why.
Or every time a big truck goes by, it shakes. It's every picture in the air I walk down the halls daily.
Yeah. All right, yeah, so it doesn't look like we have too long an agenda, which means we should only be here till about ten tonight.
That's what I was thinking.
You know, right up, to start out, we're speaking with Chief Abel about some police equipment, is that right?
It's the cruiser.
Okay.
Yeah, it's cruiser.
And then also get a second quarter review from our finance advisory committee chair, Joe Woodward. All right, Chief Abel?
Miss four there, just a brief memo.
Hey, thanks. We still, oh, I read that before I put my glasses on, like, we still have a twenty-twelve, what?
Uh, so I'm looking at replacing one of the cruisers this year. We've been out of rotation for quite some time, a lot of it had to do with COVID and then supply and demand. Uh, like, the last cruiser was a year from order date to delivery. Uh, right now, uh, in this memo, it just says basically that I'm working with a couple of companies on getting quotes. We have some options and then we have the, um, police expendable capital reserve fund with adequate sum of money in there to purchase a cruiser. There was sixty-five thousand added to it after the twenty-four budget process and approval from the town citizens, which leaves us about a hundred and twenty-six thousand seven-seven-four that can be used at this time. This is my understanding, once that, once there's a approved deposit, if you will, then we have to wait a year to use it.
Yeah.
And so minus the sixty-five thousand, that gives us one twenty-six seven-seven-four in our, um, capital reserve fund for cruisers. Below that, I did a quick inventory, so people have an understanding of what we currently have. We have four cruisers in the fleet. Two twenty-twenty's, which we received both in twenty-twenty, COVID cars, if you will, the twenty-seventeen, which is our spare, and then the twenty-two, which was replace that sedan that we replaced last year. And then there's some options, if we replace the twenty-seventeen and twenty-twenty, they did a year model change, I mean, twenty-twenty did a year model change, so we can't get the twenty-seventeen. Much of that equipment doesn't fit the dimensions and the interior of the newer models. So the, there's a increasing cost to replace, um, the twenty-seventeen because we'd have to put a lot more equipment in versus taking the cage out, the seat out, the center console out of a newer model and putting it into a twenty-three or twenty-four model. As odd as it may sound, I'm kind of coming up with, I'd like to replace what I put at the very top car one in the inventory list. That car has been very problem for us. Lots of issues, it's the one with the water leak, it's back in the shop for the water leak again. So now it's, there was a quarter inch of water in it again the other day. You know, so that's gone again. This has been the third time it's been down for water leaks.
It's never been in law.
Yeah, I don't know, and then there's a list there on that car one on the last paragraph of the page. And it's sixty thousand mile life, it's new transmission, new injectors, new exhaust, new coolant, new latches, new flex pipe, persistent performance issues, water leaks, where cruiser, the twenty-seventeen, we replaced the water pump. Uh, as far as major maintenance.
Now, what about the other twenty-twenty?
That one has been fairly problem as well, but less problems than the, what we call car one. So they both have, are not the best of quality. Uh, we've, I've been pretty dissatisfied with them from the start. They've worked out some of those kinks over the years since twenty-twenty. Uh, quality control is improving with Ford and there really is not a ton of options as far as cruisers go. Uh, right now, we have the Ford Explorer Interceptor, which all four of ours are that right now. Um, there's some Dodge Chargers floating around, which are police package vehicles. Dodge Durangos, which is very hard to get and may not stick around. There's some Tahos out there, Chevy Tahoe makes a police package.
Are these Explorers all-wheel drive or?
They're all-wheel drive.
That seems like that makes the most sense.
Yeah, they, they're very good. Um, they're not four-wheel drive, but they do, they do a good job. The actual package itself, like the, the interior, the height, the stance, the utility vehicle is great. I love the package, you know, because we have all the room up back, it's ample space for the officer equipment and then if you have an arrestee or somebody in the back, it's actually big enough to accommodate almost anybody back there. So the package itself is good, it's just we've had performance problems with car one. So I, I'm kind of saying, hey, let's get rid of car one, even though it only has sixty-two thousand miles, I'm afraid of the, the problems we're going to continue to have. And now with the third time with the water leak, I don't know what's going to happen with the interior of that car. And at some point, we may be at a point where, you know, it's just not usable. It's starting to stink. We've had the interior changed, so we're going to change the interior again. Um, so that's kind of where we're at. The twenty-seventeen, right now, again, is a spare. It hasn't been, not being used much because it's the spare cruiser, but, I just feel like it's, runs better, it's more reliable. And it's, you know, it's kind of hard to justify keeping a seventeen over a twenty, but that's just my recommendation.
It's like them nineteen-sixties, nineteen-seventies refrigerators that people have in their basements.
I know, they still work.
Yeah.
And I worked up the most current quotes and I think, you know, these quotes with a little bit of, um, going back and forth with the person, the company, you know, that quote may go up or down a little, a little bit. Uh, so down the last page, replacing the twenty-seventeen with, meaning getting all new equipment, uh, sixty-eight thousand six hundred and replacing the twenty-twenty with transferring some of the equipment over should be around sixty-one thousand. Five sixty-three. It just, I know it's expensive, but just to show you where, you know, where we're heading with pricing, I pulled the quote for the twenty-seventeen. If I can find it. And back when we built that car, the car was priced out September first, twenty sixteen, we took delivery of it in twenty-seventeen. It was thirty-eight thousand dollars.
That was three percent inflation, right?
Yeah, right, and now we're talking sixty-eight thousand from twenty-seventeen to now.
Yeah.
Uh, so, yeah, it's a shock, but, uh, you know, Mason PD just got a new Kia, which is not a police package, but they like to have especially designed for them and outfitted. It was over seventy thousand. And they just put their third one in the fleet and they have lifted custom rims, mud tires. You know, and then since there's no real police equipment manufacturers out there for it, they send it to a company out on the seacoast that does the interior, yeah, retrofits the interior for them. I don't want a Kia, but, um, that's just a price comparison.
So it looks like the, um, Cruiser Fund, the Capital Reserve Fund is...
It's healthy.
Pretty, pretty healthy, yeah.
Yeah. And I'm glad we've been funding it the way we did because I think it was two or three years ago. I can't remember the exact, I think it was Bert Hamel was sitting on the board temporarily. And, you know, it was, I think it was during the deliberative session. He's the one, we, we were at forty thousand dollars at that point. You know, he made a recommendation during the deliberative session to go up and it was voted on in deliberative session, yes. So we've seen an increase in our annual contributions to the Capital Reserve and it's proven to be valuable and that it's working out.
Would you get both?
Just getting one car this year. Yeah. So I'm looking at replacing one cruiser. Um, it'd probably be, like I said, my recommendation is the twenty-twenty. I wish we didn't have to do that, but it's up to you guys what you want to do. If you want to get rid of the seventeen and keep the twenty-twenty and roll with it and see where we go, that's fine.
What does the seventeen generally get used for?
Right now, it's a backup, so right now it's being used for controls, a backup cruiser, um, and then details or, you know, anything like that. I need an extra cruiser for voting, an extra cruiser for basketball games, an extra cruiser for dances or any town function. Where we have extra officers on duty or additional staff. So that plays a pivotal role for a backup cruiser like now or, um, other things that we do. And I certainly don't need an answer tonight, it's just, I wanted to put it out there. I'm working with the companies to try to get a build solidified and then hopefully approved by the board and we can get an order in. They're still saying, still might not take delivery till sometime between November and maybe January twenty-five before we're still going to get delivery.
Yeah, so they kind of put that right on your schedule that you wanted for twenty-twenty-five and if that twenty-seventeen can hold out for a couple more years.
I think we can get a couple more years.
It'll kind of get, yeah, like a good rotation.
Yeah. You know, and I'm kind of watching the cruisers, this is an anticipated rotation. But if we're not rolling a bunch of miles on them, they're running well, we can push the dates around. Right, so we like to have somewhat of an anticipated or a plan of replacement. But if things are running good, if we're doing well, we can kind of push it out a little bit, but that's, you know, just go year by year, see how the cars are running.
This one, this car one is just not reliable.
No, and it just, it's, it just doesn't run right. I mean, every time we bring it to the dealership, they can't figure it out. When you step on the gas pedal, you're like, I want to be Fred Flintstone and cut a hole in the floor, it's not pedal with my feet to get it to go. It's, it's just the performance is terrible.
DPW has a truck like that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
It's, it's just, I, you know.
Yeah.
I think it's horrible. That's the easiest explanation I have.
It's not a good interceptor vehicle.
No. It's, it's kind of troublesome and, um, I don't know what's going to happen with the current water situation, but it's backed down at MHQ trying to, trying to figure it out again, so I don't know what's going to happen with it, but it's definitely not something we can keep in service at this point. Flowing water inside.
Now, if you could stock it and you could go fishing.
That's right. Yeah, and I'm not sure what, you know, what effect that's had on the electronics in the car. You know, we, we have an abundance of electronics in that car.
When you said the mold too.
Yeah, all the radio controllers, the, the emergency lights, sirens, on and on. That, most of it's elevated off the floor, thank goodness. It was mounted in trays and on and on. But, you know, there is no doubt that some wire is being affected, you know, somewhere.
So if you get a new one, you'll be able to take all the equipment out of that, hopefully?
If it's not damaged by the water.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
We'll be able to take most of it, not all, but most of it, we'll be able to transfer. You know, the backseats custom, it's all just a solid plastic, right, for easy to clean. That should come right out and go right in, that's a thousand dollars, right, the cage, right out, right in, there's a fifteen hundred dollar savings. You know, I mean, stuff like that. And that's why you're starting to see, you know, the difference between replacing the two different vehicles on six one thousand, sixty-seven thousand, sixty-one five, you know, and sixty-eight six. Um, so that, we, we're going to get that price even further down then, once we solidify what equipment goes over.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, no, it sounds like it makes sense and it'd be better to get rid of the other one before it's valueless almost and all the equipment's destroyed and, yeah. What do you think, Lou?
I'll defer to the chief, he knows best.
Yeah, so yeah, it can be agreeable or disagreeable, right?
Right.
Yeah, all right. So are those exact quotes that you have?
These are, these are the most current quotes that I have. I went back to them and said, hey, can you redraft them because these are older? But, uh, in speaking with them today and last week, they're like, those quotes are very close to where they're going to be. And like I'm...
When did, when did they think they could have actual quotes?
I asked them two weeks ago and I told them my deadline was today and I didn't get them.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Have you, um, gone over, what dealer, well, I guess we shouldn't call out dealers. What dealers that you know handle other police departments?
So as far as outfitting cruisers, there's a, there's a couple ways it's done, like this, this company MHQ, which is now owned by McGovern Chevy, so now it's called McGovern MHQ. Uh, they're a one-stop shop, so it means they have a whole lot of cruisers. When you go down there, there's two hundred on the lot, give or take. And they're all spoken for, right, Mass State Police, you name the agency around New England. So MHQ has like a one-stop shop, which makes them nice because you go down there, they have the inventory. And then you can go to places like Global Public Safety, which is in Bedford, New Hampshire on one-on-one, and they don't have the cruisers, they just outfit the cruisers. So you go to like McGovern or pick a dealership that, that, um, has inventory of police cruisers and if they have your color and your package, you would buy the cruiser from them and get delivered to Global Public Safety in Bedford and then they would build the car with all the police equipment inside. So I would drop off the twenty-twenty, the new one would come into Global, they would strip all that gear out, pull all the commercial stuff out of that, you know, the regular backseat, put all the new stuff in and then we would take delivery. You know, decals, all that stuff. Where MHQ, you just call them up, you get this quote and they, they do it all. And then you go, they'll call you and be like, "It's ready." A year later, but, you know.
I, I go visit my daughter quite often and I go by Hillsborough Ford.
Yeah.
And there's always cruisers over there.
Yeah, they're one of them for sure.
Right.
Definitely, you go McGovern, uh, there's a lot of them, in New England, throughout New England. And sometimes, you know, you have to pull a car from, you know, Connecticut, Rhode Island
Right.
um, for, you know, a color match or what you're looking for, for specs. So, you know, inventory still is, um, much better than it was a year ago, two years ago, but like I said, we're still looking at September, October before the delivery of the physical vehicle and then they would put it into the build process. And then she said September, October delivery, the time it gets into the build, you're talking November, December, January before you get it, depending on the backlog of what they're building right now. So Global's new, I'm trying to work with them, I'm trying to get quotes from them, they're, they're very slow. Um, never worked with them before, uh, so I'm still working on trying to get, um, more info from Global Public Safety in Bedford. I would kind of like to stay closer. Uh, but we'll see how, um, our interaction goes.
At Bedford, New Hampshire?
Yes, Bedford, New Hampshire, yeah. They're right on one-on-one, right in Bedford.
Yeah, it sounds like everybody's agreeable and understands, so I wanted to get those quotes.
Yeah, we'll solidify right down to the, what we, I'll get it to the point where like, that's what we want, that's it, we're done.
Mm-hmm.
That'll take a little bit more tweaking, uh, but, yeah, we're working on it.
Okay. Excellent. How's everything else going? How'd Hill Fest go?
Hill Fest was a success. Uh, I think Deb and I talked about it at the staff meeting. Yeah, it was a sell-out, so they had like, I think, four thousand tickets to sell. Uh, they sold out, so I think, you know, over the course of that ten-hour day, four thousand people came and went, something like that. Uh, that doesn't include volunteers, staff, security, police, fire, which added probably another eight hundred people there. So we, we were looking at four or five thousand people, uh, throughout the day. There was a couple of medical calls there and that was it. But they're very fortunate, it's a great venue. This was the sixth year they've had Hill Fest and it's grown every year and I told Deb this, not one arrest.
In six years.
Yeah, there's no alcohol being served, it's a, you know, more of a, you know, a community event versus a, your standard rock concert or something like that. And it's one of those events where, you know, if it was an alcohol concert, if you were to serve the alcohol stuff, I might actually dread it coming around as a chief, right, like, oh, man, you know. But I actually look forward to the Hill Fest every year because it's just a good time. And, um, meet a lot of good people, it's great, um, you know, for the police to be out there, meeting people, the fire department, the ambulance crew. Uh, it's just a great way to reach the community and so it's, I think it's awesome.
And the fire department cook?
Yeah, and this year the fire department, you guys probably, you might have heard, and they, um, the Fire, New Search Fire Association put on a pig roast and they did burgers, dogs, corn, the cob, watermelon. They took good care of us, I was very thankful for them and they did a great job. Those guys were really hustling down there. Real good job.
Awesome.
Yeah, those, they, they worked very hard. It was super hot that day, super humid and, uh, they, they worked hard. So it was a great success. We didn't really have, uh, we didn't receive any complaints, at least on the police side, for traffic. There was one period for about thirty minutes, it got a little heavy, but we started backing out, um, to the four-way intersection of Wheeler Road, um, Lock Road, Hot North and Poor Farm, that was short-lived. We went back to normal traffic patterns this year. We didn't, we didn't make North Road a one-way in. We left it open, um, and then some of the property of Butters opened up their fields to parking so they didn't have to, um, have an overflow at Masenic and get the buses in and bus people out of Masenic to the venue and back. And, uh, that presented quite a safety issue at one point too because they were doing that and two years ago, we had a lightning storm come in and people couldn't get back to their cars for shelter because they're at Masenic and the buses are off-site. So it kind of left them and like, what do we do? And we tried to get as many people as we could into Paul Summerell's Big Barn down there. Like, can't really fit so many people in there. And now with all the cars being very close to the venue, we've anticipated bad weather's coming. You know, you can make an announcement, please go back to your car till the weather passes, at least get some shelter. So it was really a great success. Chad Gibson is the event organizer. He's very accommodating to any resources that are needed. He's in touch with me months before the venue starts, right up to the weekend before, where we have a meeting uh, with the fire, myself and him and his staff and security if we need to go over any issues or concerns or change any, um, tactics of what we might do, but everything's been going good.
It's great to hear.
Yeah, it's a great venue.
It's awesome.
We're lucky to have it.
Yeah, yeah, truly.
Other than that, I'm going to be working on a body one camera project for the PD. Uh, I have Jackie working on some, some grants, trying to work with the, um, people to write grants. There's a grant out there now that covers fifty percent of the body one camera program. So that's coming down the pipe. I'd like to see that project and that program move forward so we can get body one cameras in the PD. It's not inexpensive by any stretch because then you have to pay cloud storage annually, et cetera, et cetera. But it's the way of the future and more and more and more departments are being, uh, wearing body one cameras and, uh, it's kind of becoming the expectation of our citizens that we have cameras. Uh, personally, I don't mind if we don't get them or if we do, but my officers want them.
Yeah.
So I'm trying to support them and they like having the cameras for evidence purposes. If there's complaints, you can review the videos, right, and go back and say, well, was it, was there an inappropriate action by the officer or was this handled correctly? But mostly for evidence is why we usually have them, right? DWIs, drugs, arrest fights, interactions, interviews, interrogations. They become a very useful tool, but there, there's a lot of work that goes with them. But that's coming down, I would probably like to present something to the board and in the future, I'll get together with Deb and see if I can get on the agenda.
I feel like it protects both sides too, you know what I mean? Like...
Do you have dash cams in the cruisers?
Right now, we don't have any video equipment at all, except for the, uh, the interview and interrogation room that we put in renovation. Other than that, there's no, no video equipment.
Not in the cars either?
None. Yeah, and I'd like to see us have something, so, um, but we'll work on the grants, like I said, it's a fifty percent grant. So they would, you know, we'd, whatever the quote is, we'd have to come up with fifty percent and then the grant would cover the fifty percent, the other fifty percent. So we're looking at probably like, you know, eight, eight cameras, the docking station and then cloud storage. You know, that way we have enough cameras for part-timers and full-timers and then they get issued out to the officer. So that cameras tagged that officer.
Yeah.
No shizies.
Yeah. It's a, it's a way of the future and, you know, it, there's been talk that they even might push it out and make legislation that requires us to have them. I don't, I hope it doesn't come to that, a mandate, but that's why we're seeing the grants now, because it may become a reality. So State of New Hampshire's pushing out grant money to try to fund some of these projects.
Interesting.
Yeah.
What's a, a soft idea cost? Because you said it's not inexpensive, you've... Nothing to hold you...
Thirty-eight thousand.
Each?
No, for the, for everything.
Yeah.
Yeah. So if you take half of that, use budget surplus if it's approved by the board. But, well, uh, I'm going to be getting a quote from Axon is the company, one of the companies that does Motorola does at Axon, there's a whole bunch of them. But in speaking with a lot of chiefs that use body cameras, Axon seems the way to go as far as, um... how user-friendly it is. And when you put it in the docking station, it automatically links up to the cloud, dumps your videos right into the cloud from there. And I don't wanna get too far into it, but then it's nice, like if a defense attorney wants it, you just, you know, you ever, you ever make a link to share your photos? To Google, make a link, you email it to the defense attorney, he gets access to the video, downloads it and we're done. We don't have to burn it to disk, we don't have to put it on a jump drive and mail it to them. Same with our prosecutor, being a regional prosecutor, send it away, yeah, here's the videos to the case, whatever the interaction was. And that becomes, you know, part of the uh evidence for prosecution or for defense.
Is that working out good with the regional prosecutor?
Very good, yep, so far so good, yep, she's doing a good job, yep. Yeah, taking a lot of work off our plate and she's doing a good job, yeah, sounds good.
Excellent.
Recruitment, just real quick, it's slow, we're trying, um I had three interviews last week, two which uh just didn't think they would work out for us and one no show. So it's, it's, it's a struggle, but we're working on it.
And we have a new officer in the training.
In the academy, yep, he graduates October fourth if successful. And then we'll field train him for probably another month or so and uh the ultimate goal, becoming a solo officer, right? So hopefully November, December, he'll be on the road. I just gotta get into the academy first, so. It's become very strict up there over the years.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, so they're doing a lot more uh discipline up there than they have in recent years. So it's challenging, but I don't think it's a bad thing, but it's, it's holding onto a very high standard, which is good, yeah. Yeah, there was another project, I forget what it was, but anyway, I'll uh put it together for, and get on the agenda at another point.
Okay.
Very good.
Thank you for the updates.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, appreciate you guys having me.
Good to see you again.
Good to see you too.
All right, Joe, you're up.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you, good night, Mike.
The glare.
Oh, yeah.
That was my way of saying, could you please turn that? Alright, do you need more lighter?
No, I'm good.
Alright, can you see this?
Yeah.
No, but I got it in front of me, so.
Okay, good, that's even better. So for this review, I hear things a little bit different, really just to save time. So the, this first page is an overview by department and it just says the town offices are, have spent forty-three percent of their budget as of the end of June. So you can scroll right down this and say, you know, how are we doing? We're doing, doing pretty well. Uh insurance is a hundred percent, but that's paid for the year upfront. Scroll down, sixty-seven percent DPW, we've got something that's overspent there, so uh just to be aware of that, we'll cover that in a little bit. But uh this is just a, a one-page overview of each department and where we've, you know, where each department is overspent, underspent and so forth. This is direct out of BSNA, um I I put the file up, I exported it to Excel and then printed it, that's all I did, so it was very, very easy to get to. It seems I don't have a mouse.
Did you turn it on?
Oh, there it is.
So we're up to sixty percent of the overall budget spent in June?
Yeah, but keep in mind that um there, there's warrant article expenses that are in there, that, that raise that, as well as the insurances that are a hundred percent spent, that raises that as well.
Oh, okay.
So a lot of these things are annual fees, so it's, it's not a real accurate number that way.
I see.
See if I can. Okay, let me make it a little bit better. Okay, so the, the second page is where we're overspent. And I've color-coded it so that you can see, do the printers have color coding?
No.
Okay, that's too bad, uh that was a neat little feature. So if you look up at the, at the TV screen, uh anything that's overspent is, is on this page. Uh yellow indicates that it, it's an issue that we have to keep track of, green says, yeah, we're overspent, we know it, but, but we're not worried about it. Uh the big ones are you know, vital statistics, supplies are overspent, that's not a lot of money, small money. Uh records management, we kinda knew that, that was a swag, we did the, the budgeting, that we wanted to do some more scanning and so forth, we didn't really know the final numbers, we weren't surprised about that. And then uh there was one for assessors that were, that were not overspent much at all, it's, it's, you know, a hundred bucks over, so I think that's what it was. Okay, uh scrolling down, ZBA Publications, looks like Manadok Ledger was posted to the Z, the zoning board account uh multiple times, should have been once per year. So I, I think what happened is probably the, the bill, multiple bills came in, it would have been the answer, she just entered it to the one uh zoning board account. So Mindy's aware of that, she's, she's working these, all these issues now. Lower Field bikes, uh the, the money's not big, but we created an account which we didn't budget for. So by rights, we should probably put that into a different account this year, create a new account next year.
What's your account, Seth?
Uh, Lower Field bikes, it's under uh general government buildings.
Is that for the electricity on them or what?
I believe so, yeah, yep.
Yeah, so that was gonna be a liability account that would be reimbursed by the people using it, right? So there should, we shouldn't need to create um
It's a reimbursement.
As a part of our general budget, because it's gonna be kinda like the ZBA postage or planning board postage. Um where we'll get reimbursed for those expenses.
Should we move that out of general government buildings and into parks and rec then?
That would make sense to me.
Yeah, yeah, excellent, it would keep it, yeah, all in the parks and rec.
Okay, good.
Zone, and that's one of those things that's been kinda odd, is the electricity down at the park and you know, where it all gets put and taken from and, yeah.
Alright, I'll make note of that. Uh cemetery labor, uh we budgeted thirty-five hundred, we spent four thousand, we're still early, so uh that, that we've gotta keep a close eye on. Uh we're already over the budget and we still have quite a bit more of the year to go. I, I went back through, it tests all labor, uh Bruce Aho and Carl.
Toco, good.
A lot of that is just um make, you know, fixing stones, straightening stones, so they're not high emergency things, so.
Yeah, it's small money too, really, it's four thousand dollars total, so we're not, it's not a major issue for sure. Uh fire department stipends, so for some reason we've put salaries into the stipend account. So the stipend budget went way up and the salary budget went way down, so uh we've gotta figure out how we're gonna deal with that. That's just a bookkeeping issue, I believe.
Okay.
Is Randy aware of that?
Mindy is aware of all these, yeah, yeah, I need to sit down with her and go through a whole, a whole bunch of stuff, but, but she has this as well and and then we've got a charge for uh computer support under the building permit, I don't think that's the right charge, I think that's gotta be into a, a different account. So we're looking at that as well.
That's the twenty-four thousand percent increase?
Exactly, yeah.
For a total of two hundred and forty dollars?
Yeah, I know, we budgeted a dollar, we spent two hundred and forty dollars, uh it's probably an error there, we weren't expecting to use that account, so. And, and nothing really jumped out and said, I'm horrified about this. I looked at the fire stipends and the fire salaries, and we're right where we, where we're supposed to be spend-wise, but we're just in the wrong accounts.
Yeah.
So. So the third slide, uh third page is just the ones that we're close. You see, most of these are green, uh the yellow ones we're ju, we're just tracking, but, you know, we've always, we've spent more than fifty percent of our, of our budget already. I think I actually said it to sixty percent, so we've spent, spent more than sixty percent of our budget to date, or as of June thirtieth.
So we've already started on the town report?
Uh we, we paid that months and months ago.
It always gets paid in the beginning of the year.
Is that for the previous year?
I see.
Yeah. Cause we don't actually um pay for it until, because we don't have, we have to have it completed.
Right.
And we don't pay for it till it's completed, till we go actions.
So we have about uh maybe ten or so items that we need to dig into further. Really not bad.
Yeah, or some of it sounded like it was the majority just sort of account, like which accounts they were charged to.
Exactly, yep. And you've got nine more pages of backup data and, and this was direct out of BSNA, so this gives you the detail by, by department and by account and same color codes, same mail to you as well.
Almost like just a regular budget, you know?
Exactly.
So this whole report, even with the low highs, all that was all, wow.
Yep.
That's great. I was looking at this and I was like, what are we doing to Joe?
So, so really, uh I generated this report uh maybe a couple of weeks ago, I shared it with the FSC team, I shared it with Mindy. Uh and then today I regenerated the report and it took me about fifty minutes to get this, you know, all these pages together, so it was, it was quick, easy.
So much easier than previous years.
Not a part of BSNA.
Uh so anything with colors in it is, is me.
It's you.
Oh, it is you, I thought that was a part of it.
But all of this is just BSNA.
Yes, exactly, yeah, and really I, I create a simple formula that says if it's below twenty-five percent, it's low, if it's above fifty percent, it's, you know.
So you're not going into each line to put in the color, writing what it is?
Exactly, I, I do one equation, which I actually did last, um the last quarter, and I just copied that in here, dragged it down, it takes me minutes to do. Uh and then I go through anything that, that is a concern, whether it's, it's high spending or overspent, I go through and look at the line items. Then I go back into BSNA tool, and this is where it takes time, I go back into BSNA and look up that account, I find out what those expenses are. So for example, at the, the fire department stipends, I went right into it and I looked at the stipends, I looked at the payments, I mentioned these are all salaries. And not, not stipends, so. That's what takes the time, is reviewing those.
This at the top, is that the name of the report, if I wanted to look at this?
So.
Where do you get, how do you generate the BSNA end of this?
Uh so this is a, a ledger report. And it's, it, it's simple to do, I, I actually, I gave you instructions to do it.
Yeah, it's them same instructions.
Same, same, exactly, yeah.
Okay.
You can go through.
This is a new report.
Yep.
Format.
It's, it's not a new format, no, it's, it's a, it's, it's pretty easy, I can do a quick demo if you wanted to see it.
No, it's, I have the screenshots that you sent off, so that's good.
So I guess the only thing, uh if you have any questions, uh I think they're probably on page two.
So I talked to the, about the reimbursed postage, it's, cause it's been a nightmare every single year, everybody questions it. And they said, I talked to the auditor and they said, just, we just do a journal entry at the end of the year, so it's even.
Yeah, nice.
Cause we get, we get the money in, we, we spend the money, but we can't add to the budget line. But we have to have somewhere to put the expenditure for the postage machine, so it's a whole big and you said something about the zoning board publications?
Yeah, Manadok Ledger.
Yeah.
It was billed uh three times for the zoning board account.
So it could be, every time they have a hearing, they have to, they have to put it in the paper.
Oh, it's, and it's a hundred and two dollars and fifty cents for, for that ad, uh that makes sense, I thought that was a subscription price.
Oh, no, no, they have to put an ad in every time they have a hearing.
I thought there was a, there was a uh there was an account for that, publication account.
Yeah, it is, zoning.
Yeah.
And I'm pretty sure that's also reimbursed.
Yep, that's reimbursed.
So that's a non-issue.
Right, it's a non-issue.
Change that to green.
There we go, zoning, yeah, notices advertising.
Publications, oh, wait.
Yeah, it's written here.
Yeah, zoning notices advertising, yeah.
Yep.
Or did it get put under publications?
It got put under publications, yeah.
Oh. So publications, I believe, is the um the planning and zoning handbooks. I don't think it's Manadok Ledger. Did you look into that and that's what it was?
It's definitely, it's definitely.
It was paid to them, it was paid to Manadok Ledger?
Yes.
Okay, so it's just coded wrong, it has to go under notices and advertising?
Oh, alright, so those are the, the books.
Yeah.
We get, that's what it's supposed to be used for, that one.
That's the publications.
Yeah.
And then notices and advertising, that's Manadok Ledger, so that just needs to be moved. Cool.
It was excellent to see this, like this, Joe.
I know, right?
Yeah.
And it's excellent that it's easy for you to do.
Yeah.
Instead of, like before, yours was
I was thinking about sending this report to uh BSNA and asking if they could generate it, um and then I think they can do it, but.
With the greens and yellows and reds?
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, they probably can.
Yeah.
You should see how much they'll pay you for it first.
Yeah. Right, I know.
So you had s, mentioned that there's something to look into on DPW? On this cover?
Something was overspent or something.
Yeah, you said we gotta look, a little, dig a little deeper.
Yeah.
That's forty-three twelve point nine. Forty-three twelve point nine. So that is fuel, signs, safety equipment.
Signs.
Equipment, rent and DPW lease.
So we're not overspent in DPW?
It was just close.
I have a bunch in DPW, uh I just have tracking of them.
Yeah. That's.
So supplies, we've spent nine thousand, our budget's ten thousand, that's probably just because they're bought a bunch of stuff upfront. Just gotta track that.
And I thought Peter had said they were over on signs, because people keep stealing them and they have to keep replacing them.
Yeah, yeah, you can see that.
Yeah, he's at ninety-three percent of his sign budget.
Yeah.
As of June.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that safety equipment. Yeah, I think that safety equipment. I saw that come through, he replaced a bunch of hearing protections. And then we have a lease. What is that lease up?
I don't recall.
The mechanic?
Yeah. Then we're gonna have to decide what to do with it, huh?
Yeah, right.
Is that the cat loader? Yeah.
Alright, I can see the fire salary stipends better now, too.
So it looks like we're in decent shape overall.
I think so, yeah, yep.
That's exciting.
Have you ever been in here when, uh, the budget is looking like it's gonna be overspent in all your years in the town office?
Um, not in here, no.
I mean, in the town office, in the various roles, like, has word come down like, oh, no, we.
Oh, yeah.
We can't buy any more pencils.
You can't work, you can't work anything over your allotted eighteen hours, that's it.
But because the, because the margins were so, looking so close, or?
I don't know.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, I don't know why, but I, I remember being told that. Like, you cannot work one minute over your eighteen hours a week.
Yeah, oh yeah, cause it's all budgeted exact.
Yeah.
Like the, the hours.
Well, which I never understood that, because they budget for fifty-two weeks. And when we were part-time, we didn't get vacation, so if we were out sick or vacation or holiday, if we weren't here, we weren't getting paid. So I'm guessing there was probably a minimum, a minimum of two weeks, maybe more a year. That they're over budgeting, cause we didn't get paid for it, cause we weren't here. So I tell these guys, I mean, as long as at the end of the year, like, just keep an eye on it, you know?
Yeah.
Like, if one week you can, you can work ten hours and the next week you have to work twenty-five.
I think that's like the most frequent one, is just the hourly.
Yeah.
Working, but as far as all the intangibles and the different things that people, like, everybody budgets for. Seems like the departments kind of hold out until they know they're good before they make in those, uh, discretionary purchases, yeah, yeah.
That you don't a hundred percent have to have it, but.
But I do also like that method of managing the time.
Yeah.
If Board of Assessors needs the clerk, more hours, don't.
Right.
Let them do it.
Exa- I mean, right, exactly.
Yeah, that's, that's.
You know, that's how, that's, I mean, that's how I've always said it to them, since I've been sitting here, cause.
Very good approach.
I mean, stuff needs to get done, right, exactly.
Do you have anything else for us, Joe?
Nope, that's it.
Much appreciated.
Yes, love it.
So I, uh, I found a, um, Arizona, Page Arizona is using ClearGov for their capital planning.
Yeah, I forwarded that to them.
Okay, good. Have you taken a look at that?
I did for about five minutes.
Okay.
And how powerful, like, the ClearGov, I didn't understand exactly what it was. I thought it was just augmented our accounting.
Yeah.
A bit, and no, it's a whole thing.
Yeah.
It's transparency for the community, yeah.
Yeah, it's pretty cool.
Do you guys get to check it out?
I didn't get a chance to, no.
Yeah, I mean, I looked at it for like five minutes.
I didn't get it.
Yeah, it's, it's something. It covers everything. You can't even adequately explain it, really, cause within ninety seconds, my brain just started going crazy.
Yeah.
Like, cause it even has the check register.
Right.
For the town, like, so everybody can see, like, what's been spent and, yeah.
Yeah.
It's kind of the all the different modules that they have available.
So if you go into the projects folder, it'll tell you, um, all of the open projects, some that are proposed, some of their in-process, some of that are completed. And then if you click on a, a project that's being proposed, some of them are very, very general, like I wanted a ZIBO, for example.
Right.
And they're very, very short, but there's, then, then there's some that are, are in the real phase where they've got money, they're trying to figure where they're gonna get the money from, the sources from. And, and it's, it's a really interesting amount of information you can get from that.
It's crazy.
Uh, yeah, it's, it's, it's impressive, Page Arizona. So if you want, I can go through or watch through at some point, some other time, and, and I'll walk through with you, one of the projects with you, but.
Okay, that'd be great, if you have the time to do that. And I thought that that was just a general, cause it's Page Arizona.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, that's what I, when I pressed it, and then I was like, oh, wait.
Like an odd name, like, so that was the sample, you know, ClearGov? That was since, I didn't know if that was just a generic hypothetical, um, or if it was real.
But it's real.
Yes, yes, the real, the real, uh, town.
So when ClearGov was, was presenting their tool, we had access to the actual data, so we were playing around in, in there. Um, the, the, the Aris, I think it was Page Arizona, actually, at that time, too, but we, we actually saw what they were doing and, and how they were doing it. We couldn't edit it, but we could see the detail. Uh, now, because they have this transparency module, that allows us to see from the outside what they're doing.
Right.
Uh, but, but, but I couldn't get to where I was before, you know, a year ago, to say, to look and say, here's how they do the process. It's not like that. All we have is what the, the residents of Page get to see.
Yeah.
So, but obviously certainly a lot of data.
Yeah.
It's awesome.
And it seems like something that you'd want to put more into.
Yeah, I know.
Much more powerful, so it's kind of. I remember from when, uh, you were in here, before speaking about it, it seemed like there's a choice of how much we were gonna give them, like, would it just be capital? Would it just be this? But after seeing it, I think there's high value to it.
To everything.
Yeah, uploading it all, and, you know, yeah. Cause it really is powerful for the community to be able to go in and see.
Yep, I agree. And, um, Dee came in on Friday and we kind of talked about a bunch of stuff. And, um, I'm creating four new accounts, I think, three or four new accounts. So strictly for the ClearGov, um, thing, it's gonna be in BSNA, but there, it's gonna be heritage B, uh, B, uh, CIP. It's gonna be PD, General, CIP.
Yeah, excellent.
Whatever the other ones were.
Yeah, good.
So I just need to get those numbers from Carleen and then I can put them, create them in. I can create them in BSNA.
Yeah, okay, excellent.
Or give it to you to do, like that.
And, and I shall have to go back and work with the committee and pull up more data for, for that as well, but. I, I think as long as we get the account set up by the, the ClearGov people, that we can get in there after the fact and make our changes.
Yeah. Yeah, it's pretty, like you said, it's pretty powerful. It's pretty awesome.
Yeah, just they have it broken down from every which way. You could think of something, like, really easy to find things and a lot more easily searchable than, like, our website. It almost could replace the website to some degree. Cause it has all the announcements and all the proposed pro, like you said, the projects, that just blew me away.
Yeah. So I, I've actually been talking to this company called TomCloud for website that is like so much easier. And like, you can put your agenda on there and you can do your minutes right in that website from the agenda and, and it's right around the same price as we're paying now, but it's a little more user-friendly.
And it works on Doc Gov.
Yep.
And, and ClearGov integrates with a whole bunch of other municipality.
Software, yeah.
Tools, just not BSNA, not a direct integration with it.
Yeah. But you can upload and.
Yeah.
Import and export from between the two.
Yes.
It's just not like an automatic thing.
Oh, so I wonder if that's why, like, in the Page Arizona, like, their checkbook, the last update is April thirtieth. Like, from back in April, so I must have to go back and upload things directly instead of having it live, you do it or something, yeah. That's a, that's a funny page, too, cause it's all like liquor purchases. It's like, what are they doing over there? And that's what made me think, wait a second, maybe this is just a demo thing.
It, it appears to be a, a live.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
So it does say live on it, and there's links all through it with a lot of data in, so.
Yeah, and I didn't really dig too deep. I think I spent like five or ten minutes, just kind of, I was more looking at the projects and the.
Yeah.
You know, and like, there's a picture for each project and the name of it, and it's, it's pretty cool.
Yeah, thank you for all the, you know, different projects that you're taking on.
Yeah.
And helping us with, you know, get through. Cause it's gonna be really excellent tools to communicate back to the community for the town for the years to come, you know?
I hope that works out. There's still a lot more work to be done with the CIP, definitely, but.
Yeah.
We'll get there, just.
Cool.
Thank you, sir.
Blind now.
Do you want this brown cable plug?
Oh, that'd be great. Thank you. Thank you. Yep, just that one.
So, up next, maybe we have some Parks and Rec updating or updates? I spoke briefly.
Yeah, so she, um, was trying to get volunteers to put together that new, I don't know if anybody's been down there, a huge pallet of toys. And, not toys, but all the e- equipment. And she cannot get anyone to volunteer to, to help install it. So she reached out to multiple local people and companies and received zero quotes back. She has one quote for fifty-eight hundred dollars and they can get it done in the next few weeks if allowed by the BOS. And she spoke with the trustees of the trust funds and they thought it was appropriate to use capital reserve funds for the installation. So.
I think this is the company that supplied it to, right? Or it's a con, yeah, I think they have a direct, this is one of their contractors that they use.
Yeah.
So they're familiar with all the equipment anyways, and how it's supposed to be done. I don't know.
Just a little over the five thousand pre-quote deal.
Well, she tried to get more quotes. There was one other company that gave her a quote, but they couldn't get it done until late October, which doesn't really help the park much for the summer, whatever.
Is that quote available, or?
Um, it was a verbal quote, cause she, she was like, I'm not even gonna bother, cause it's too late. And then, um, one, another company just said, uh, we don't have time, we're not interested, and then somebody else said, so, she just couldn't get the quotes, so.
That's a, that is an issue.
Yeah, I know, I mean.
You can't get volunteers, you can't even get people to quote you.
I know, I know.
That's what we ran into with that pool filter house.
Yep.
Yeah, oh, yeah, the actual structure?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, everybody's busy.
I know.
You know, we're a contractor town and it really puzzled me why we weren't getting more, but then I remembered, when I was doing renovations and carpentry, I never looked for work.
Yeah.
I always was scheduling work based on calls coming to me.
Right.
And I think that's the big, big thing. They're not out looking, they're not checking our website. If there's a job coming up, because they're getting calls from their clients, they're not.
Yeah.
I don't know if there's a way we can kind of tell Peter and me and that, have to send it.
Yeah.
To hand-deliver to people that you think are good fits for the job.
Well, I'm pretty sure they posted on Facebook and everything, too. Well, she did.
Oh, yeah.
For the volunteers.
Yeah, she does, it does say that she reached out to multiple local people and companies.
Yeah, well, Peter's ran into the same thing.
Yeah, yeah, so I think that direct contact's trying to be had and.
That's true.
Yeah. You know, you might be in one of those odd situations where people locally would, would rather not charge that much, but then if you're on the job or you're committed to projects that are bringing money in, it's hard to, to make that shift, too. So.
This was the, um, what do you call it, the little kids' playground?
Yeah.
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 And part of it, too, might just be the fact that it's playground equipment for the town and nobody wants to assume the liability for anything.
Yeah.
You know, but there's the companies that install these all the time, that they're used to it, and they know what they're doing, that they're not worried about the work that they're doing. So that might be some of the challenges with this. The times have changed a bit, cause I know, like, the, uh, piece of equipment that this is, uh, replacing was, you know, constructed locally, you know? But maybe that's just not, we're moving out of that era, I don't know, you know?
It could be a temporary thing as well.
Hopefully.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't see any reason to withhold this. Not blowing a budget, or.
No.
Really up to the, uh, the ones who use these capital reserve funds. They're the managers of it, really.
Yeah.
Did I get a copy of this?
Yep.
Should be in the bottom.
Yes.
Nope, that's the, the truck.
Maybe that's the other copy, here you go.
Do you have the other copy there?
Yeah, remember I said I had too many copies? I thought I only printed four. You got it? Do you want it? Do you want to keep it?
I have no idea what the, uh, what the market value of that is, but.
Yeah.
When everything's anchored down and it's not like, you know what I mean, so.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, I don't.
I don't mean.
I don't have any familiarity with. So, but it's fifty-eight hundred and there's money in capital reserve and it's a recommendation by the Parks and Rec director and so I wouldn't have any issue with it. I agree with that.
Make a motion.
Make your motion, you started it. So moved. Make a motion to approve fifty-eight hundred dollars to be, um, taken from the capital reserve fund of Parks and Rec to be used for equipment installation. That's for the new, the new big one for, for set sporkage.
Good. I'll second that. Yeah, and the quote exactly, I came from Nationwide Canopies, the playground. Making a note. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No one's opposed?
Nope.
No one abstained?
Oh, I, I just want, want it to be where you miss it so much.
I do.
You look for it and you add it. Another note about uh cleaning?
Yep, so um Jenny gave her notice as far as clea- just just cleaning. I thought you were spinning, you had to look at your wallet.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, just cleaning. So we need to um. First of all, for next year, I know we only budgeted a hundred dollars a week. Fifty dollars for the town office and fifty dollars for police department. No one is gonna do that, just so we're all aware. Um, and so we're gonna reach out to a couple of cleaning companies and see if we can get a quote. For budget time in the meantime, I don't know what we're gonna do. Lisa said she'd vacuum her office and clean the bathroom.
It's funny that you just said that because I was thinking if you got everybody a little stick vacuums in their offices just. And then for five minutes, like once a week, just go out into the general areas and.
So I'll be getting back to you with dollars on that. But like I don't even know what to do in the meantime, you know? I mean, these rugs are disgusting. They've been cleaned many times and they're just not cleanable anymore.
I remember, I think when I first came on the board, we were talking about replacement.
Yeah.
Of the carpets.
Is that right?
Yeah.
They're gross.
Yeah.
Do we wanna go with like a hard floor or? Is it about is or keep it carpet?
Ah.
The hard floor is nice, but then you get you have the slipping potential. Like the carpets are nice just for that traction aspect. And with the general public coming in.
Yeah, true.
I don't know.
I I guess so. If they wear um shoes with rubber soles, they have more of a tendency to um. Uh, to grab as you shuffle across.
We'll have shoe allowance for everyone who comes in the town office?
No, we'll say, we'll say grocery stores have hard floors and they seem to do okay. I think we do fine with hard floors. They do have non-slip tiles. But it I don't think there'd be any special consideration made for slipping. You just put in whatever laminated vinyl or what what have you and then. It seems like it's easier to take care of. Cause then you wouldn't need a vacuum. You could have, everyone has their broom.
Yeah, right. Yeah, that's a lot cheaper. Even though I went to go look at brooms, those aren't that cheap these days. It's like, there's not even technology in this.
Well, then when people spill their coffee walking in and out of here.
Yeah.
I mean. Won't ruin the rug, you can just slip on the coffee.
Well, get a few broom.
Well, see, and that's the thing. I feel like people would be more cognizant of what they're doing. Instead of saying, oh, just.
Carpet does hide a lot too.
It does. Just spilled my coffee on the. Well, I don't know, whatever. That's a whole other thing.
We need someone to step in for cleaning.
Yeah, we need someone to step in for cleaning, so.
With that amount of money in the budget, to spread it out for the rest of the year.
We have fifty dollars a week.
No, I understand that. So if you had someone coming in just once a month for the rest of the year, however that works. What else are you gonna do?
Yeah, to have like a more thorough cleaning once a month.
You still have money in the budget, but you're saying you're not gonna be able to hire anyone with that money.
Oh, yeah.
So I'm saying, instead of having it weekly, you have no choice. I mean, unless we wanna blow that budget, which maybe we have. Other items that we can absorb it in. Looked like they're pretty close.
PD has an overage this year.
PD.
The lack of employees. Well, so does trans- I mean, uh, DPW. I don't.
He wants to use any overage for a dump truck.
So anyway, so there's that. Um, and then. Lisa, I think is gonna come in on the sixth. If not, it'll be the following meeting on the twentieth. Um, with the uh list of potential deeding properties. And that's all I got.
I'm sorry, I missed that date. The sixth?
Either the sixth or the twentieth.
Okay.
She's trying to figure out what date, or we're trying to figure out together.
Yeah, well, I think that's a good idea, Jason, to pool the money for the month and have them in once a month instead of not at all.
Yeah.
Yeah, a couple hundred dollars.
And then the other thing too is they have to be uh like the big background check for to do the PD.
What did he say? August? I'm sorry, didn't make you repeat.
The sixth or the twentieth.
Six, so we have, I think we have a Peter coming in on the sixth.
We do. Yeah, there's about three other things on the sixth too.
Is there?
Yeah, I don't remember off the top of my head.
Yeah, that's a loaded night.
But I think I think the deeding stuff is one of them too. Now, do you need her to come in or do you just want the list? I mean, basically, she's just gonna present you with the list.
I think it'd be, well, it'd be good to have her, yeah. I don't know, I'm not sure. It's always good if you have questions to have the person that generated the report present.
Mm-hmm.
Um. What are your thoughts?
Yeah.
It kinda slows the process down potentially if there are questions and then she'll have to, you know, come back. It was like a lot of back and forth.
Okay.
Is that all gonna be non-public or?
No, no, like I think decisions, I don't know, I'm not. Cause it's all public information after.
I know, I can't remember. I think we did them all last year in non-public, I feel like.
Yeah.
Whether to deed it or give it away or, yeah.
Yeah. And then it all gets posted. It's just, it is what it is, you know, but the discussions aren't forward near public.
Right.
Uh, conversation, yeah.
Alright, that's all I have.
Lou, any old new business?
No.
Jason?
I can go last.
Just um gonna make a note um that we posted the cemetery sexton position.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, so we're looking for a cemetery sexton. How's the DPW um hires going?
They have one new hire.
Yeah, he's down a couple weeks ago, I think.
Yeah. I think he's been working.
So it's kinda, everything's just slow, but.
Yeah.
Creeping forward, it sounds like even for the police department and.
Yeah. Yeah, and they're on track to hit the uh paving schedule they had.
Nice.
I love you've gone up Wilson Hill.
I haven't.
Yeah, they've done a lot of clear.
Yeah.
They're still working on it. Still have drainage to do, but.
Can I just say one more thing? Can I circle back to me just for one second? It is DPW, DPW related. Keegan has kicked butt since Peter has been on vacation. He has stepped up.
Yeah.
Gone above and beyond.
Well, I was.
Amazing.
I, yeah, I really appreciate what he's done.
Yeah.
On Saturday, I was here at the Green Center. And he came back from the transfer station. And so I was able to talk with him for a while, which I haven't had a chance.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
Unbelievable.
Really good discussion. He's, he was an excellent choice.
Yes, absolutely. No question.
Yeah.
That's great. Third person I've heard that from.
Really?
Solicited, yeah.
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 Yeah, I've heard it from a couple people too.
One of the things was some type of, not emergency, but it was like.
Yeah.
Some type of situation that they needed to be smart to get out and like.
Yeah, they, I think it was when they had was, it was cutting trees for um fire, police. Something during that big storm or af- right after that big storm.
Yeah.
Yeah, I read that too.
Yeah, like.
Kudos from everybody. I bet I've heard nothing but great things.
Yeah, it's really good.
So thanks, Keegan, if you're watching. Great job.
Yeah, even in that discussion, they, I talked for quite a while and him and Peter are, they both have. They seem like they have a passion for developing vision for the DPW going forward.
Yeah.
It's really encouraging.
Yeah.
Excellent.
From Peter and Keegan, all the talks that I've had, yeah.
Alright.
It's nice to see somebody who's got their heart into it.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Alright, so now your last.
Oh, my last thing was uh uh wondering.
Yeah.
If anybody has, anybody being you.
And by anyone, I mean you. By we, I mean you.
Looked into countersuing Craig's meet at all company for the ongoing. Appeals and all the, just seems like it never stops. Last week, I was uh signing off on the legal. And there it was. It's just there.
So, um, no, I have not.
Is that something we'd wanna do? Try and recover some of the legal funds.
I think if we had made a request throughout the process for that to be the case, but.
We have on several occasions.
Yeah, but the court say no until it becomes frivolous, so they.
I wonder what, I mean, this has been going on for three years, right?
Actively go after that frivolous aspect or not, but I don't, um, should probably have the rest of this conversation. And not, yeah, non-public.
Maybe, but anyways, I think it's something we need to, it's just for three years. And I understand and I respect people's rights to take the town.
Right.
If they disagree to take the court, but I mean, what we've been put through is. And it looked like it's ongoing. Maybe it's had its end. I don't know.
There's two outstanding elements in the court, sorry.
Yeah, the the hearing that we went to and I can't remember if it was January or February. And it was supposed to be, maybe it was later than that, the answer from the HAV was supposed to be handed down in March, in uh May, the end of May twentieth or something like that. And we still haven't heard. And they're so backed up, it's crazy, I guess. As well as Superior Court. So.
Anyways, that was, that was one roundtable thing I had. I think that was pretty much all I had.
Alright, Debbie, second call?
Nope.
Lou? Joe?
Nope, nothing here.
Yeah, nothing. Jason? With that, thank you very much, Ron.